Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mayor, I hereby call to order the November 23 meeting of the Laconia City Council. We'll note for the record that the minutes tonight are being kept by Recording Secretary and City Clerk Mary Reynolds. And as always, we will begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Bob Hamel in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that the Clerk call the roll, please.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Bowden?
Here.
Counselor Whitman?
Here.
Counselor Baer?
Present.
Present.
Yeah.
Present.
Let the record show that all six Councillors are at the meeting tonight, and a quorum has been established. And I'd also note for the record that the Council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and City Finance Officer Donna Woodham. Our first order of regular business is the acceptance of minutes. Before us tonight, we have the regular meeting minutes of November 9, 2015. Those minutes were distributed to the Council on November 20th. On November 13, I'm sorry, no corrections had been received as of the date of this meeting. And I would ask that if there are any, not any corrections at this point in time, or ask if there are any corrections at this point in time, if not, according to our new procedure, without objection and no corrections being cited, I would declare that the minutes are accepted as distributed by the Clerk. Consent and action calendar. We have one item tonight on the consent and action calendar. That is a request by the Laconia Kiwanis Club to raise funds at Rotary Park on Sunday, August 28, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The application does not say so, but I am confident in saying this has to do with the annual Rogers Ride, motorcycle ride, which starts and ends at Rotary Park. And a motion would be in order to approve that request. By Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Hamel, and in discussion of approving this request from the Laconia Kiwanis Club. This is for August 28 of next year. All those in favor of approving the request, please raise a hand.
Right.
I have six votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries, and the request is granted. Next up is citizen comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. This would be the appropriate time for anyone in our audience to rise and speak who is, who wishes to address the Council on any matter that is not anywhere on tonight's agenda. I don't see anybody moving, so we'll move on. We have no interviews, no communications. We do have a need tonight for two public hearings. Yep. Oh, here it is. Okay. The first topic, public hearing, is on a resolution regarding the acceptance and expenditures of donations received by the city for a total of $3,000. And that would be $1,000 from New Futures Incorporated and $2,000 from the Lakes Region, I'm sorry, for the Lake Wunnapasaki Association. Notice of this public hearing was made in the November 11, 2015 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. So I'm going to call this hearing to order at four minutes past seven. And note for the record that if you wish to speak to the Council at this public hearing on this topic, that in accordance with Council Rule 22, you are asked, please, to identify yourself by name and address, and that you limit your comments to five minutes. When everyone wanting to speak has had one opportunity to speak, we'll give anyone who wishes a second opportunity to speak two additional minutes. Action will be taken on this item, this resolution, not at this public hearing or immediately after this hearing, but under unfinished business on tonight's agenda. So the matter before us tonight is the resolution relative to authorizing the City Manager to accept and extend two donations on behalf of the city. New Futures, $1,000; Lake Wunnapasaki Association, $2,000. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Council on this matter? I see no one does, so I will declare this hearing closed at five minutes past seven. And as noted above, we'll take this matter up again under unfinished business. Our second hearing tonight is a resolution relative to the adoption of New Hampshire Revised Statute 31:95/B, having to do with the appropriations of funds made available during the year. The short version of it is the passage of this resolution, adopting this statute, would allow the City, would allow the City Manager to accept and expend unanticipated money from state, federal, or other government unit or private sources which become available during the fiscal year in the amount not to exceed $9,995.
Ninety-nine.
I'm sorry, $99. Notice of this public hearing was made, excuse me, in the November 11, 2015 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. For the, notifying our audience tonight, again, for this public hearing, we would invoke Rule 22, which asks each speaker to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments, please, to five minutes. If everyone has had a chance, once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, we would allow someone to speak for a second time for up to two minutes. And again, action on this item is on the agenda tonight under unfinished business. So is there anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to address the Council regarding the, the adoption of RSA 3195-B, having to do with the acceptance and expenditure of donations and unanticipated revenues that are, that come into the city during the course of the year in amounts of less than $10,000? I'm sorry, I forgot to declare that public hearing open at six minutes past seven. No one is rising to speak, so we will declare this public hearing closed at seven minutes past seven. And again, repeat that we will take this item up under new business. Next up is Mayor's Report. I have a couple of things to, to mention briefly, the, a couple of upcoming events that are of interest, I think, to everyone in the city. The annual Christmas parade, or holiday parade in Laconia is scheduled for Sunday afternoon at four o'clock. And I believe that parade, as traditionally run, starts at Wyatt Park and comes up Main Street to the tree lighting ceremony at Veterans Park and Veterans Square. Again, the start time this year is pushed back to four o'clock, so everyone will make note of that. And I'm sure Council is invited to participate in that parade, and we usually have a good representation. The second thing is, which Councillors Bolduc and Hamel certainly need no reminder of, but since we're not going to have a meeting before this date, I thought I would mention tonight, and I'm sure Counselor Bolduc will probably mention it as well, is Christmas Village is, is quickly coming up. And I believe the dates on that are Thursday, December 3 through Sunday, December 6. And you, Counselor Bolduc typically addresses this during Council comments, so I'll leave it to him to talk about the hours, but it won't hurt any if we accentuate that twice, twice tonight, that this is certainly something that, an event, an annual event that everyone in the city greatly looks forward to and enjoyed by children of all ages, including the ages represented here at the table tonight. And lastly, I would like to give you a brief update on the Colonial Theater project. The, the announcement was made Friday that I, that I suspect most of you took in, but in case some didn't, it was announced on Friday that the, the parent corporation of this project, a subsidiary of the Belknap Economic Development Council, has announced the hiring of an architectural firm and a general contracting firm for the Colonial project, as well as an engineering firm, and that all three firms that are going to be involved directly in the project from this day forward, as it turns out, are local Laconia businesses. On the architectural front, there was tremendous interest in response to requests for proposals. I was on the committee that interviewed those, and, and we had, we had applicants from as far away as New York City and consultants who wanted to be involved in the project from as far away as San Francisco. There was tremendous regional interest in this project from an architectural standpoint. This kind of opportunity to work on this kind of project doesn't happen every day. And so there were lots of people that wanted to get involved. The committee narrowed it down to four finalists who were interviewed in depth, and the committee then selected the Laconia firm of Masachik and Turpin, better known to us locally, I think, as Sonia and Rob, whose office is right next door to us here at One Mill Plaza. And so they can look out their window every day and see the back part of the Colonial Theater building. And we very much look forward to their involvement, and I think it's fair to say that no one is approaching, or ever has probably approached, a project with more enthusiasm on the architecture front than, than they have, being, this is their hometown. And on the construction manager front, again, there was tremendous interest in this project on a regional basis. I think we had a dozen or more applicants, and the final four were interviewed by a committee. And Bonnet Page &amp; Stone of Laconia was the unanimous choice of that committee to be the construction manager on that project, and so they have been hired to do that. And then the engineering for the project will be done by Rizfrosh Shumway here in Laconia also. So we have a total of local involvement in this project. The one piece of the puzzle that, the last in terms of shaking shape, is the fundraising effort. We have a goal of trying to raise $2 million privately for this project, and that committee is now hard at work. We had a meeting on Friday, I think it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, over in Meredith, at which time we met with a fundraising consultant that had been hired for the day for advice and counsel, and that was very well worth attending. And we had another meeting today, and that committee is almost meeting now on a daily basis, in terms of formulating a strategy and moving forward. But I think the, there probably won't be any immediate announcements there, because relying on advice from the, from the consultant, we're probably going to be well into the success mode, if you will, before any general announcements are made about, about how much money's been raised or where it's coming from. But like I said, that effort is almost a day-to-day effort at this point in time with specific time goals, so, so it's, the project is looking very favorably on, on every front imaginable. There really has not been a drop of bad news yet. I'm sure there will be at some point in time, where there'll be a hiccup or two, but as of yet, we have not encountered any obstacles, whatever, so that, that is proceeding. And with that, we will proceed to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time in our meeting for anyone in our audience tonight to address the Council on, if they wish to, on any matter that is on tonight's agenda in any place. Okay, we're moving right along. You can tell this is a Patriots football night. Okay, committee reports. I don't think we have any committee reports tonight, do we? Not that I'm aware of. Liaison reports, any liaison reports from Councillors? Counselor Baer?
This past Thursday, the Police Commission met, and as some of you know from the paper, there were three retirements from the police force. Chief among them was Captain Clary, who has been on the Laconia Police Force 28 years. And he'll be sorely missed, and I know that I speak for the Council and this, all the city, to thank him for his years of dedication and great works. And at the same time, they installed Tom Tarr as a new Commissioner, and Doug Wickham was elected as Chair, as the new Chairman of the Police Commission. At the same time, we honored Warren Clement for his, I believe, 16 years on, on the Commission. And there again, the city thanks Warren for his years of service, you know, on the Police Department and a lot of other departments. And I guess that's it.
Well said, Counselor. Thank you. Managers' report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep the pace this evening and keep things moving along as well. You've got the projects update was included in your agenda packet for the second meeting of the month. We have wrapped up all significant construction projects for the year with the, the final paving was done on Chapin Terrace. We had a significant road construction season this year. Additionally, we are moving forward with the fire station project. A paving and striping was done over there, and again, work continues on the, the original portion of the building, and that is moving along for a completion date somewhere towards the end of the year. A few other areas that we'll be continuing to work on over the winter, one dealing with the DES Watershed Assistance Grant, that's tied in with some of the sewer sniffing dogs and other approaches we're going to use down in the Weers, so that that can coordinate with the proposed construction project. We've continued some work over at Memorial Park with improvements. Weather permitting, we may finish those this year, or they may carry over until the early part of the spring. This map, yellow map that I placed on your desk this evening, just ties in with the, the master plan and the reimagined Laconia, which was also mentioned in the projects update, where they spoke of doing some of the road labs. And I spoke of this briefly a couple of weeks ago, about in some cases, looking to do bump outs and looking to do some temporary layouts to get feedback. So what you're looking at on Weers Boulevard, in the little red slash lines, those are areas where we either have sidewalks right now, and I believe they're all completed, maybe with the exception of one of them, which is committed to and going to be completed by new developments. So all those little red lines are where sidewalks exist right now. And you can see the old adage, kind of the sidewalks are nowhere, they don't interconnect. So what's going to be happening tomorrow and Wednesday, and why I just wanted to bring it to you, and again, it's just to receive input from the residents, is they're going to be doing one of those road labs around Weers Boulevard and just kind of putting some signs along the way of traveled path and getting residents, visitors, people driving by to be thinking about, you know, what if there were sidewalks here? How would it feel? How does that add to connectivity for people living in the area who can get to either, you know, the shops up on, on the Guilford/Laconia Town Line or down into the Weers, to take advantage of some of the restaurants and other recreation down there? So nothing committed to, it's just an opportunity to, to get feedback from folks, but that'll be happening tomorrow. Two other items that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is, one, is that we've had a resignation, recent resignation, from the Laconia Housing Authority. So Tom Druin, who has served for a while, had tendered his resignation as he's locating out of the area, so we certainly appreciate Tom's service, and, and he has submitted his recognition. I am filling that vacancy with Mark Kondadimitreki, who's a local businessman and local resident, and it would be filling the remainder of that term, which would expire at the end of October 2018. So I'm bringing that just to, for your awareness. The final item I have for you this evening is, we have our tax rate set in conjunction with the Finance Department and the Department of Revenue Administration. It was set today. If you recall, back during the budget deliberations, we had, let me stage it this way, we had prefaced it on the 29, the, the total assessment citywide, we had included the $29 million of new assessment that our building permits had, which brought us to about a billion 844 million. And then later in the budget process, we felt comfortable that some, that number's going to come in a little higher, partly due to the slight rebound in housing prices in, in certain segments of the city. So we add an additional $5 million to our estimate at that time, bringing it to $1,849 million in round numbers. So once we adopted the budget, assessing staff was still working through the summer to finalize those numbers, as they always do, so we always know it's kind of a moving target. Some years, we expect it to be a higher number, and it comes in lower, or vice versa. So this year, the assessment ended up coming in at 1.883 billion, so $1,883 million, so about $34 million higher than we had factored into our tax rate. Everything else about the budget process remains the same. The amount to be raised by taxes, the amount of new spending, everything is the same. The tax rate, we had targeted to be at $22.58 per thousand, I believe, yes?
No, 74.
I think that's what I proposed, what we adopted.
Oh, yeah.
That 22.58 was the amount with the budget, is going to come in at $22.20 per thousand. So the tax rate's coming in 38 cents lower than we anticipated. But again, the, the flip side to that coin, if you will, is there's an additional $30 million in assessed value that was gained on paper, anyway, that was separate from the new construction value that came in line. And it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, as I've shared with you in, in my four-plus years here, different classes of property rise and decrease at different levels. So in some years, it could be single-family homes and condominiums show more of a swing one way or the other. Other years, it could be commercial and shorefront property. So there's not a, there's not an equalization across all properties, it's going to be X, but there is that additional value, which again, is positive sign of the economy, that, that, you know, prices are starting to increase, as opposed to, we've had a couple of years of overall decrease in assessment, and that reflects the tax rate coming in at $22.20. So we'll get some more information out on that, but happy to follow up on, on any questions you may have on that or, or any other topics this evening. We plan on getting the bills printed this week, we do have the holiday week, getting them in the mail by no later than Friday, with the due date of December 28.
Any questions for the manager?
Are you all done, everything?
I am.
Okay. I do.
Counselor Hamel?
A few things that have been brought up in the past and haven't hurt anything, so I'm going to bring them up again. The old Burger King, it's been about a year that it's been brought up about cleaning up the lot and covering the sign, which is an ordinance that the sign has to be covered, because we forced Carl's Steakhouse way back when to cover his sign up at the Weers before it burned down. So that's one item I'd like to hear something about.
Is, is that the lot adjacent to the Burger King?
Correct.
Okay, so not the Burger King.
No, 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 the, the, I'm sorry, but the one adjacent to it.
Okay.
The one where they were trying to build the yacht club?
Correct. The other thing has been for several months now brought up about the dumpsters that Dunkin' Donuts have not been fenced in. They still aren't. So don't know where that's at.
Which Dunkin' Donuts?
The new one on Union Avenue.
We've got two.
It's been there for four years, maybe, and the dumpsters never, still are not closed in.
We've reached out to them again recently and.
Oh, okay. The other thing I'm, I'm curious about is the upgrades that were done to the intersections with the electrical line in the roads. The one, one I'm curious about is the one on Union at Busy Corner, because it seems like it was the Church Street side that was the problem, because you'd sit there for a long time. And they did the one by that new smoke shop on Union Avenue. The others, doesn't look like anything else has been done in that area, so.
We were, we were working with our traffic engineer, and they went out to the different legs, because all, every intersection is different, so we've, we've taken care of, there may be some minor tweaking still to do, but installation, and, and again, other than minor tweaking, we have replaced, upgraded, or repaired at Busy Corner at Messer Street in Union Ave by the Irving Station and at Lakeport, or in Lakeport at Elm Street, you know, and those were completed. If I had to give you the exact date, I would, I would estimate it probably on, maybe by Tuesday or Wednesday of last week, so literally within the past five, six, seven days. We still need to do the one in Veterans Square, but there's going to be probably some milling and filling of that area where the water line went in, and we're going to hold off to spring, so we can do that properly in conjunction with the final repair in Veterans Square. There's still a water gate, is my understanding, that within that construction, the Water Department isn't completely satisfied with something and how it's lined up, and they're going to be back in that intersection. I'm not sure if it'll happen right now, or if we wait till spring. But once that goes in, we'll do the milling of their, of that intersection to do the final paving and that loop detector we placed in at that point. So I can double-check on the Church Street section of Busy Corner, but I do know our engineers worked on all of those intersections and went out and identified the issues and replacements are in, but I'll specifically.
Okay, and the reason to go to the loop detectors instead of the overhead cameras is?
A lot of it had to do with cost and available funds, because for each camera on each direction is significant dollars, and I've got the, I've got the amounts in an email. I didn't print it off and bring it with me tonight. And even to get one of the big 360 type of cameras that we have down here, I don't want to give an inaccurate number, but off the top of my head, I want to say it's mid $20,000 range to do one camera that does four ways, because each individual camera that just angles on an intersection is in the area of, of $6,000 or $7,000. So to try to do cameras with all of those intersections would have been a significant investment that just was not in the, in the budget at that point.
Okay. The other thing, I, I'm the one who brought this up several times, is about the upgrade of the crosswalk signs at the intersections to the counter, countdown type thing.
Yes.
Some of the local communities have done that, and I know you mentioned about, we'll do, you know, probably kind of do it when we upgrade the intersection. I don't know if any of us will be around when those ever happen, so I'm just wondering if there's some way that we could look into what the signs cost and bring it in front of the Council.
I'll bring you those costs again. I didn't, the question was coming up tonight, otherwise I wouldn't have the information, but I'd be happy to bring that to you. And again, some of it comes down to budgeted cost. I mean, it may not sound like a lot on a few things, but all of a sudden, you start adding cameras and the, and the signalized and the countdowns, and it's, it's some serious money by the time you put them together, but happy to bring you those numbers.
And my last question, I mentioned this before, we've talked about it, is the infrared treatment that was supposed to be done on Highland Street, the new patches that they've done. And that the paperwork said it was supposed to be done within 45 days and/or some other timing. Is that still going to get this done this year, or is that out the window? And if it is, according to that agreement, Busby was going to pay for the infrared treatment of those areas, and if it's put off till next year or the year after, the year after that, is he still going to pay for that to be done? Because as of now, into that, that contract, or whatever you want to call it, that was written up, he's supposed to pay for that.
He's still committed to pay for that. I'm not sure if the timing, it will happen this year or not. I know we did some of the infrared down on Core Street and some of the sections closer to the downtown, but I'll double-check on Highland Street. Just what we're talking about, the infrared company, I believe they're out of Claremont. We've actually, as we did last winter, we've kind of got them on retainer for a couple of key days, so if we do hit some bad pothole areas that we've, we've got them, and we think that worked out well last year, that they were able to come in in the middle of winter and do, give us a couple of days. It doesn't go quite as quickly in the, in the winter as it does to the summertime, and not saying that I'm looking to do Highland Street in the winter, because it's a scheduled job, whereas the potholes are more of an emergency type of a situation.
Yeah.
But just sharing with you that we do have that company on standby within our mix of approaches for this winter. The other item that we have that we're actually have tested in a few places is a different type of cold patch. It's actually a more of a jellible type of material that we're able to buy by the pallet, and if you keep it inside a heated garage and a truck in the, in the garage, you can go out into the cold and it will retain enough. go out into the cold, and it will retain enough heat during the first couple of hours of the day. And you can go out with more of a clay or silly putty cold patch that can go into cold, go into holes that have water into it, and be a fill different than some of the cold patch that we know, we come in, and two days later, it's all gone out of the pothole again. So we've actually experienced, we've tested a few areas that our Public Works staff knows where we did it, and we did it mid-fall, and we're monitoring the wear on that through some of these events. But we've got the, we've got the product, we've done some demo with it, and that's gonna be another option that we'll look to utilize, so we're not just throwing cold patch into the same hole 10, 20 times in a row during the winter time, so.
And I just thought of something else. The trenches that were cut on Beaman Street, that's off of High Street, that I've been asking for several years, according to the new rules that we adopted, or Public Works proposed, that those cuts would be taken care of within three years now, instead of whenever they get around to it. So those have been there for four, five years now. After that, they were cut within months of a new road being put in there, because a new house was put in. And those have never been taken care of, as far as the 25 feet on each side.
Okay, let me check into that for you as well.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for the manager?
Just going back to the tax calculation, I commend the work that's been done to track that, it's helpful that, from a budget standpoint, to have a better sense, so just pass on our thanks for tracking that.
We'll do that with the Assessing Department, and I, I should have mentioned, you all know that Donna does a great job for us, and you know, Donna really working with DRA, and it's kind of a, DRA's great, but they've got every community in the state trying to set a tax rate all at once, and everybody gets a little impatient and wonders why our number isn't rising to the top. But Donna was very patient and kept on top, and kept us...
She was holding that $30 million in her back pocket.
She was. She was surprised.
It kind of looks like, though, the adjustments that were made, as far as keeping track of the real estate, has really paid off, as far as getting a closer or accurate tax rate, instead of a big jump that we weren't...
It is, and again, that's why sometimes just the tax rate can be deceiving, because in those years, we may have lost that 30, or 40, or 50 million across property. But again, psychologically, we try to come in as close to the tax rate number, just from a, you know, we've got it. But in this economy, where housing went down so quickly, and now it's done, it has not been a typical seven, eight, nine-year period in the real estate market. Usually, you get more stability. So hopefully, we're through the swings, down and up, and we'll continue on this, we'll continue to monitor, and I think we learned a few things with the process this year, to hopefully, you know, maybe tighten it up a little bit more in future years as well.
Well, the clearest illustration of that was recent years, anyway, was certainly 2009, where we lost several hundred thousand, several hundred million dollars of revenue. And that certainly didn't mean that our spending went up several hundred million dollars, but the tax rate went way up.
Right.
Counselor Hammond. So I think, just to put it in perspective, I think we were at a high $2.1 billion at the peak.
I think that...
So we're recovering up to almost $1.9 million now.
Coming back.
Still have a couple hundred million to go.
Yeah.
Keep those home improvements coming.
It's a lot easier, it's a lot easier to lose than it is to...
That's for sure.
Correction, like we had with the recession. Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have two items of new business tonight. The purpose first is to repurpose, to consider a repurpose request for Millstone, the Millstone Park slash drainage project. And for those of you who are wondering, if any of you are, what, where, or what Millstone Park is, that's the moniker that's been given to the small park in front of the McIntyre Block downtown, at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Main Street, that was just completed right before the Pumpkin Fest. So before we get a motion on the floor, you have a memo in your packets from the city manager, or to the city manager, from Mrs. Woodman. And I would ask if any of you have any questions before we get to making motions on this. No? Counselor?
I have a question, it's kind of a comment.
A comment.
I'm not gonna vote for this, for the simple reason, this was a project that the council had rejected when it came before us in a TIF package. Then it became a drainage project. Not against the cost of fixing the drainage, but I am against spending leftover monies from the bridge project for extending the walk, and the, using, making a pocket park when it was voted down in a council meeting. And it didn't come before us to see if we would approve the project. That's just my comment.
Counselor Hamel.
Yeah, the only question I had on this was the $10,000 from contingency. I would have rather seen that whole project come out of the TIF money, instead of taking from contingency.
If I could, if I could respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So to Counselor Bear's point, absolutely, I understand what you're saying, Counselor. The bulk of this project was sidewalks and drainage that got repaired. And I think it's been this council's, you know, kind of calling card, you've always, you know, gone that one extra step, whether it's on the high school project, and the Hewitt Center, or to do the field, or doing the bump outs and the widening on the Main Street Bridge. So, you know, and staff doing this, we need to go in and do that, and there was a lot of hard surface down there. And we did significantly scale it back from what was originally down there. Just to be clear, this is not money left over from the bridge project, it was from the gateway enhancement gardens and stuff. So we really tried to parallel it from the gateway project to this area downtown. So on the contingency, that's not contingency out of the general fund budget, there was that $53,200 was in for contingency and bond council fees, which we had estimated to be quite a bit higher, and they came in very, very low. So the $53,000 is unspent of TIF contingency dollars.
Okay.
So across, across all budgets, from the Wow Trail, the Riverwalk, the water line extension in Veterans Square, the gateway project, it was, it was $53,000 as part of that $1.705 million project that was the TIF fund. So in using the $10,074 and change, still leaves us over $43,000 sitting in that TIF contingency, should something come up with any of the Riverwalk segments, or we need to repurpose that for something different downtown, be it, you know, parking garage cameras, or security cameras, and use those TIF funds to do that. So we tried to leave it as flexible, and the remaining money came out of the general fund, where it should have, for sidewalks and drainage, and those types of things.
Any other questions or comments before we get a motion on the floor?
I just have a question of...
Can you tip your mic down, please?
I just have a question of Counselor Bear. I'm not quite, I, I'm not sure I quite understand what your objection is, could you help me with that?
I have it here, minutes of the meeting. TIF came before us and presented a list of projects they wanted done.
Prior to you being on the council?
Wow Trail, the Riverwalk, Pocket Parks, part of the bridge enhancement, there was half a dozen items or more. And the council approved the Wow Trail and the Riverwalk, and extensions, but they absolutely voted against a Pocket Park on Pleasant Street. And I just feel that it should have come before us again. That's all.
Okay. That occurred prior to my being on the council?
Yes, yes.
Sorry?
Yes, 2013. We voted on it.
Okay. Was that one of the last things that came on, along with the...
I believe this was in conjunction with...
The Wow Trail.
The $1.6 million, or whatever it was, bond issue that was approved by council, that included the, these, the biggest chunk of which was the $400,000 for Wow Trail Phase Two.
And then we had the gateway project, the Riverwalk segments, were in a variety of places.
So on that list of that proposal was a park in that exact same location, and the council took that off, that off, and now that's back on?
It's not, it's not back on, it's done.
It's done.
Oh, oh, well, we better get rid of that.
But again, it was significantly scaled back, and a lot of it, the sidewalks and the drainage would have needed to be completed regardless of it. So again, it was...
Has any money been, other than what you've got here for us to vote on, spent, you know, for the drainage by the sewer department or the water department? I mean, is this project is actually more than what we're looking at?
Yes, the total project was $86,000. So the remainder of the 86, minus what we're asking you to transfer tonight, the 29 and change, has come out of the general fund, out of the sidewalks budget and/or drainage. Water Department had a piece of that when they came in and replaced and did some extra paving down there, so we had more than a trench patch. So some of that came out of the operating budget, as it appropriately should have. That would have been the amount, that if we just did the bare minimum, we would have spent that money anyway, and just kind of repaired the drainage, repaired the sidewalk, and we would have had there now what was there before, which was kind of sterile in a lot of, a lot of sidewalk. And I will say, I've heard a lot of positive comments from a number of people, Pumpkin Festival and beyond, of, of that area down there, and the nice water element, and, and people do appreciate, again, the investment in the downtown, and again, some of this is TIF dollars going into that project.
Okay, motion would be in order at this point in time to approve the following transfer. From account 21-401-001-0001, TIF Gateway, $19,515.17, and from account 21-401-001-0012, TIF Bond Fees Contingency, $10,074.83. That amount transferred to account 21-401-001-0010, defined as TIF Millstone Park Drainage and Sidewalks. The total from is $29,590, and the total to is the same amount, $29,590. That motion is in order. And it is made by Counselor Lippman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Balance. Any discussion of this motion, please? Counselor Lippman?
I think on balance, you know, the point of just trying to bring something back, I think would be a good thing to do, just for, for, I guess, closing the loop on, on something that we voted on, but I think what was done based on what was, had to be undertaken, I, you know, can't argue with it, so that's why I'm making the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed? We have four votes in the affirmative, two votes no, and the motion carries, and the transfer has been approved. Second item for discuss, new business, is a general discussion of the monumental oak tree. I guess that's to distinguish it from other oak trees. Monumental oak tree on Union Avenue. And for that, I will turn to Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We put that on as the agenda item, as the council wanted. The background material came from multiple sources, and was still being compiled as late as Friday afternoon, even today. So the packet that is on your desk this evening came from at least one request of a city council to include a few things. So in looking at it, you'll see that you've got the conditions of approval from the Planning Board, action on May 27, 2014, and it's on page four of five, and this is, again, is dealing with the oak. Under 5A, conditions applicable during and after construction. The large oak tree near the northeast corner of the property is a monumental shade tree, I guess that's where the word monumental came from, and as such, shall be protected and maintained during and after construction. It was also requested that we have a map of the, of the lot showing the tree, and as you're looking at the map, the tree is in the lower right corner of the, of the lot itself, just to put it in perspective. From a traffic engineer perspective, we have McFarland and Johnson working with the city on a few things, so they were able to do a safety review, looking at strictly from sight lines, they spoke to some minimum distance, I have a few photos there. And on a strictly safety for vehicles exiting where that site driveway is, their recommendation is that it's a hindrance, and it does impede sight. We have from the state of New Hampshire, from the Department of Resources Economic Development, from the Community Forester Division, we have a document prepared by Scott Rolfe, I hope I'm pronouncing his last name correctly, focusing strictly on the tree and its condition. Talks about, there's some evidence of loss with the main leader, appears to be an old injury, there's not significant, there's not evidence of structural weakness at this point, or noticeable stress cracks. He does note that, in regarding the crown, in the roots, the roots probably have been impacted by not being able to grow under Union Avenue for many years now, just because of the compaction in the base there. He also points to the fact of the other adjacent parking lot, that I'll refer to as the Dairy Queen Building, that that parking lot, based on the size of this tree, and how far you would expect roots to be extending, probably had some impact to it when that was constructed a few years back, and again, because of the base material and any compaction on it, and then also what was done recently. He does put a few photos in there, that you can see on his report, showing the critical root zone, and for a tree that size, it's a fairly wide diameter where you'd be looking at. And points to a few root suckers shooting up, and a couple of other items. So report from the state foresters in there, also included is a letter from the Heritage Commission, which came to us, and I think Nancy forwarded to all of you on Friday, during the day, that the Heritage Commission has taken a position that they would request the city to support the tree staying there, and remove the asphalt from around the tree to maintain, to maintain the tree while the issue's being finalized. And the final document you have is from Luke Powell, our Assistant Director of Public Works. Luke Wellnade, an arborist, does have probably the most tree-related training of anybody on our staff. He looked at it based on three areas of concern, one being sight distance for vehicular traffic, and you can see that there's concern on his point from just strictly the sight, the feasibility of moving the sidewalk. He doesn't think that we can narrow the width of the sidewalk and keep it a viable sidewalk, so his, his bottom-line recommendation there is it may be best to eliminate the sidewalk in order to take some of the pressure off, allow for, you know, more natural flow of water. And I don't think it was in Luke's report, it may have been in the gentleman from the state, in, may have suggested some kind of a pervious surface. If we were to do some kind of sidewalk right there, they could do something with pervious pavement. And the final item that Luke spoke on was the condition of the tree. And again, he says there's a few areas of concern, as I think the, the state forester noted, you know, a few branches and a few areas are dead, there's still obviously plenty good with the tree. But again, over the relative short term, he's talking 10, 15, 20 years, there, there are some items that within the tree that are gonna need some maintenance and stuff. So that's kind of runs the gamut from local to state forestry, traffic safety, Heritage Commission, and what the Planning Board approved, and that was that the tree was to be maintained during the construction. So that's...
Counselor Lippman?
Could you clarify what jurisdiction the council has on this?
We don't have any true jurisdiction. Certainly, I know, I think Counselor Balance asked to place this on, I believe it's coming to the Planning Board, but not until the January meeting, is my understanding. I think, so to start over with the Planning Board, they could certainly amend their original decision, and, and say that that condition of maintaining the tree does not have to be kept. They could stand by their original decision. The council, obviously, is the lead governing body here, but not on land use issues as far as Planning Board approval. So you certainly could weigh in on the fact that, you know, in the interest of citizenry and community, and our heritage and other things, there's, you know, concern about maintaining this tree as important, if that's what you want. And we could look at steps such as, you know, removing section of the sidewalk to allow for either just a natural drainage into the root system, or to do something with a pervious surface. So those types of directives, to me, for staff to go out and do something in the area certainly are warranted.
Go ahead.
I'd like to see us do those things. I mean, you know, respect the fact that it may not be the perfect in terms of line of sight, but... sight, but if it's, you know, there could be a lightning strike that takes down any tree at about any point, but if we get another ten to fifteen years of enjoyment or longer for that, you know, as part of the planning conditions, I think that was part of it. We did lose what we had hoped to save there, and it does give us some enjoyment to have it there, you know. There is an understanding why it would be simple to remove it, make it, make it perfect, but I think we lose something else in doing so.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes, I think what I'd like to see there, and if you want, I'll make a motion to that if you need that authority from us to do that, but remove the asphalt that's there, loosen up the compacted portion of the sidewalk and fill it, leave the curbing, and put loam in there with grass. And it should be done before real winter sets in.
I think we can remove it, whether we're getting loam to come in and take this time of year. I doubt you're going to have many pedestrians on that strap.
Yeah.
We can certainly, we can certainly get the asphalt out of there, and then determine the appropriate approach come springtime for...
Would you need a motion for that?
I would like that, and I think if you wanted to...
Let's get, let's give everyone a chance to comment before we get to motions. Councilor Bolduc?
Yes, I looked at the tree before any of this came out, and being familiar with a maple orchard up at the farm, when the center of the tree goes, like that one has, it won't be too many years before that comes down. And you never know when they're going to come down. First thing you know, it's down, but the inside of that tree will rot very quickly. And there's nothing anybody can do. That was Mother Nature that took the center of it out, and it's laying right up in there. You can see it laying in the tree. And you can take the asphalt out if you want, but I don't think that's going to save it. I know we tried to treat one at the farm for a whole year with the bottles there, feeding it and feeding it, and at the end of the year, it looked pretty good. So, the arborist says, well, I guess it's okay, you can take, start feeding it. Well, within six months, it was dead, so feeding it isn't going to bring it back. The inside of that tree has taken in a lot of water, and it's rotting from the inside out, and that's how it's going to go.
Other comments?
I don't...
Councilor Bowden?
I don't think that conclusion is supported by the red oak tree assessment and by the assessment done by Mr. Costanas back in September when this first came up. The reason I brought this up is because I thought that we needed to do something about that sidewalk this year in order to, in order to save, to try to save that tree. We can do other assessments, but I think it's important that we do something now in terms of that sidewalk, and do what we can to save the tree. And I've heard an awful lot of sentiment in this community that says, save the tree. And it's a beautiful tree. I don't know if it's rotten from the inside or not, Armin, but I'm not willing to put it in its coffin today, so...
I'm not saying cutting it down, I'm saying that it's going to go, and it's going to go quick. It's not going to be there very long. You know, I'm not saying one or two years, maybe ten years is it, but it'll come down by itself because of the interior rotting. And if you want to take the asphalt out, take it out, but why didn't the Planning Board address all of that when they were there? They're the ones that okayed this plan, and he did what was supposed to have been done.
Well, I think the Planning Board made a condition that the developer do everything that it can to maintain the tree.
But you needed the sidewalk. He had to have the sidewalk.
Well, you know, I'm not going to get, I don't want to get in an argument about it because how the sidewalk got there is not my issue right now. How the sidewalk gets out of there is my issue right now.
Well, I think, you know...
I think it does raise one issue, and since you're, to me, in my mind, and since you're our representative on the Planning Board, I'll address this to you, and that is that just giving this a very quick reading, and we didn't have this in our packets, so we weren't able to...
I understand that.
To look at it in depth, but just at a quick spot reading, the state arborist is clearly pointing to the fact that not only did what we as a city, through the Planning Department and the Planning Board approve in terms of the site plan possibly endanger the tree because of all the added asphalt in the area on the root system, but also prior to that, what the Dairy Queen Project did on the other side of the tree with all the additional asphalt, didn't do it any favors either. So, one of the things I did know quickly there, the arborist is saying that, you know, is suggesting that the city have some sort of a review process or something or other, or consider such a process. So, it's one, in other words, what I'm getting from that is it's one thing to say, save the tree, buddy. On the other hand, we turn right around and approve a project which circles the tree in asphalt.
Well, what, no. I don't think that circling the tree in asphalt was part of the approval process in terms of the sidewalks. I think the requirements for a sidewalk...
No, I'm talking about...
It might have been a mistake. I'm not...
And I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm simply saying if you look at the site plan that was approved by the Planning Board, clearly there is a driveway within...
Inches.
A few feet, inches of the tree that was approved.
So, I think the recommendation here is we need, if we're trying to save a tree, we need a more sophisticated...
Yeah.
...review of it. Lesson learned.
Councilor Doyle?
I just, my weighing in on it, I, eventually, the tree's going to die. It may, you know, like, like Councilor Bolduc said, it may be ten years, the arborist said twenty. You know, how many times have you been in other cities and you've seen the grating around, you know, the roots of trees, and you see huge, massive oaks? Well, San Antonio Riverwalk, for one thing, surrounded by asphalt, and those trees are thriving. Let's give it a chance.
Let me ask a question of, or let me interrupt. Is there anyone else who wants to comment? Let me ask a question of the manager. We, we know that this is a, that this is the purview of the Planning Board in terms of, there has been an official request made of the Planning Board to amend the site plan and allow the owner of that property to take that tree down, and we don't directly have any role in making that decision. But what, if any, is the appropriateness of the council taking any official action in terms of a resolution, for example, directed at the Planning Board? Would that be highly inappropriate?
No, I don't think so in a general sense. If you're saying that as the elected body here in the city, you're responding to significant constituent contacts that are encouraging the mayor and council to take action that's reasonable and timely to extend the life of the tree. And again, where I don't think the Planning Board is acting on this until January, if you wanted to say that will...
Well, what I was going to ask is if it was the will of the council to ask that the administration draft a resolution that we could pass at our next meeting, directed to the Planning Board.
On the bigger picture issue, and if, and assist a resolution, if you wanted to direct me to remove the asphalt now because we're coming into winter in timeliness...
Yeah, I'm looking at two different actions here.
Absolutely. So, I think that, I think the one could happen, you know, timely, and the other one, we could draft and get input and have it on your meeting for December, which would still get your message to the Planning Board in plenty of time for their deliberation on this matter.
How does the council feel about that? Let's take them one at a time here about the resolution. A resolution passed by the council directed to the Planning Board?
Yeah.
You feel no...
To save the tree?
Yes.
I'm just concerned about if we remove the asphalt, and somebody walking down there trips on something that, where the asphalt isn't, what's going to happen?
So...
It's going to be loam, so it isn't a sidewalk.
All right. So, what I'm, what I'm asking is, should we have the administration draft a resolution that would be similar to these other letters of support you've seen, like the one from the Heritage Commission, which is addressed to the city council, except ours would be addressed to the Planning Board, expressing that the will of the council is that you not grant permission for the, for the landowner to take that tree down?
I think that's appropriate.
I'm sorry?
I think that's appropriate. I think that's appropriate. I'm going to learn this microphone.
Just quick, go ahead.
So, I guess in terms of what, we don't need a motion to draft that, we're just asking you to come back with something. So, I guess the issue is whether we'd like or not like the asphalt issue, which has been identified as a, as a clean problem with preservation of the tree, addressed before winter sets in, and I'd make that motion.
All right. Can we, before we do that, I just want to, I don't want to have the city manager go through the motions of drafting that resolution if it's not going to be supported by the council. So, I'm just trying to get a general consensus as to whether or not we would like that resolution to be drafted, and then we'll get to the asphalt.
Yes.
I would, yeah, they've already agreed to it.
Yes, and you said yes, and you said no?
No.
And you say?
Yeah, I, you know...
Okay, so we have, so yes, please. We have a consensus with one notable exception. Councilor Hamel?
Yeah, one more thing on this whole subject, and maybe Dave could, since he's our rep of the Planning Board, could take this back. Maybe the Planning Board ought to consider, when they have sizable parking lots like this, to go ask the developer to use a pervious material for the, for the driveways, because that basically would have eliminated all this problem. And it also would help with a lot of drainage that doesn't go into our system. It goes through the ground first.
Well said. The Planning Board is trying to do more of the pervious parking lots, and they're coming before the Planning Board at a greater frequency than they have in the past. I don't know why this got by, I...
Because, you know, it's like Armin and the mayor said, we're going to take out the sidewalk, but two feet away is the parking lot, which was dirt at one time, or lawn, so now that's all paved over, so it's still covering up a big portion of the root system.
Okay, a motion would be in order now to direct changes to the sidewalk.
I'll second it.
Do you want to state the motion?
The motion is to take action around the base of the tree in terms of removing the sidewalk before winter sets in, to give the chance for the tree to survive.
And that motion was seconded by Councilor Camel. Does the clerk have that motion? Okay, as a motion on the floor has been made and seconded for the city to take immediate action to mitigate the asphalt sidewalk around at the base of the tree. Any discussion of that motion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have all those opposed. We have five votes in the affirmative, one vote against. The motion carries five to one. Thank you. We are on to unfinished business. First item up under unfinished business is second reading of a resolution relative to the acceptance and expending of donations received by the city of three thousand dollars. First off, I'll ask if there's any general discussion before we get a motion on the floor or any questions. This is, we had the public hearing about this earlier tonight.
So, this was, this was proposed under the existing rules and regulations?
Yes.
Okay, any questions? All right. A motion would be in order then to adopt a resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to expend, to accept and expend donations on behalf of the city, specifically of a donation from New Futures Incorporated of one thousand dollars and a donation from the Lake Winnipesaukee Association for two thousand dollars. May I have that motion, please? I'm sorry.
Wave the reading.
We've got to wave.
Oh, we have to wave the reading, I'm sorry. I could, I almost read it anyways. Okay, I'm sorry, before we can adopt that, we need to abide by Council Rule twenty-nine F-one on to move the waiving and reading of the entire resolution. So, a motion would be in order to waive the reading of the resolution and to read it by title only.
So, moved by Councilor Lippman, seconded by Councilor Bolduc. Any discussion of that motion? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries. And now, a motion would be in order to approve on second reading a resolution relative to the acceptance and expending of donations received by the city in a total amount of three thousand dollars. Moved by Councilor Bolduc, seconded by Councilor Lippman. Any discussion of that motion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that resolution is adopted on second reading.
Okay, second item under new business tonight is second reading of a resolution relative to the adoption of RSA thirty-one ninety-five colon B appropriation of funds made available during the year.
Move to waive the reading of the resolution.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table the resolution due to litigation that was served on the city until that is resolved.
So, Councilor Hamel has made a motion to table this resolution until pending litigation has been resolved. Councilor Lippman?
I'll second that motion.
This motion has been seconded. So, we have a motion on the floor now to table this resolution, which is a subject of litigation until that litigation has been approved. So, we're going to vote now on whether or not the rest of the council, the will of the council is to table this motion at this point in time, okay? Everybody understand that? All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative, and that resolution has been tabled. Okay, that's all the unfinished business. Lastly, tonight, we have nominations to take up in two areas. Trustee of the trust funds, we have a vacant position on the trustee of the trust funds to, to fill the remainder of a three-year term that was served, being served by Carl Wrights, which expires at the end of March two thousand sixteen. We had a lone applicant for that position, Mr. Anthony Felch, and a motion would be in order at this point in time. Councilor Lippman?
I really appreciate Tony coming forward, and he's someone that comes to a lot of meetings and is involved in the city, but I do think that this position requires a little different knowledge base than what Tony laid out to us in terms of being on that particular position. I think we need to solicit some additional applications in this regard.
I agree. We also had a letter from...
Councilor Hamel, or we council...
I'm sorry. We, we also had a correspondence from the head of the trustees of the trust fund, also pointing out that it does require somebody with a lot of financial experience and, or banking, you know, they're dealing with millions of dollars, and I think this is one position where we should be looking for somebody with financial expertise.
Yeah, I have no, no issue with, on the spending side, it's the investment side that...
Well, yeah, yeah.
We need, I think, someone with...
Is there anyone on the council who wishes to place a name and nomination? No? Okay, so we will make no appointment tonight, and I would add to what, no, Mr. Felch is in our audience tonight, I would add to the, to the sentiment expressed by Councilor Lippman that we very much appreciate your application for this position and hope you understand the council's position here in terms of a very specific skill set that we hope to achieve in terms of appointments to that particular body. Okay, next up is Park Creation, Parks and Recreation Commission. And what we have here, again, is an unfilled term. Long-term member Jeff Patterson resigned, and his three-year term did not expire, does not expire, until the end of March two thousand sixteen, so we are seeking... So we are seeking to appoint someone to fill out the rest of the months remaining on that term, and we had two applicants. First applicant was Anthony Felch, and the second applicant was Arthur Kirk. And so we need to fill that position tonight. And to repeat what our procedure is and has been on that, on that, in that area, when we have more than one applicant. In a minute, I'm going to open the floor to nominations, and you may place one or other of those two names in nomination. And if it gets a second, we'll have a discussion of that nomination, and we'll have a vote. If that vote receives a majority support on the council, that appointment has been made, the position has been filled, and that will be the end of it. If that first nomination does not gain majority support on the council to fill that appointment, a motion would be in order to place the remaining name in nomination. Everybody understand that? Okay. All right, so the floor would be open for anyone who wishes to place either of these two gentlemen's name and nomination. Counselor Bolduc.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to place the name of Arthur Kirk for the Parks and Rec. Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, the name of Arthur Kirk has been placed in nomination by Counselor Bolduc. It has been seconded by Counselor Baer. Is there any discussion of this nomination?
I'd like to, I guess I'd like to thank Tony for coming forward for this, too. And I know that you would do an amazing job. I'm going to support Mr. Kirk for two reasons, and I just, because I know you, I just wanted to explain to you why. One being because you're already involved in Levitt Park Association, heavily involved, and I think that you need to concentrate your efforts there. And the second reason is because I'm excited that we have a new blood coming in and that that we'll get another different, a different perspective. I know you do a good job regardless, whichever position you'd be in, but I really feel I need to support a new person coming in with new, with new ideas.
Any further discussion? Okay, the name of Arthur Kirk has been placed in nomination and seconded. Alls in favor of making that appointment, please raise a hand. Alls against? We have five votes in the affirmative, one vote against. Counselor Hamel. The motion carries, and the appointment has been made, and I would like to congratulate Mr. Kirk, and I would also like to thank Mr. Felch for his application. It is rare, I think, that we get to such well-qualified people to apply for the same position, and we thank you both. Okay, council comments. Counselor Bolduc.
Yes, Your Honor, I would just like to invite everyone in the city or outside of the city to come to Christmas Village. We will be open again this year from December 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th, and everyone is welcome. It's pretty much completed at this time, and so we're ready. All we need is the people to show up, and I think you'll all be...
That probably will not be a problem.
I hope not. I hope everybody can make it that wants to be there. This is our 40th year.
40th year.
So we're pretty proud of that, and again, we're inviting everyone.
And what are the hours, Counselor?
Okay, on Thursday and Friday nights at 6:00 to 8:00. And on Saturday at 10:00 in the morning till noon, it's for the elderly, elderly, elderly. And...
That's when you want me to come, huh?
The elderly.
We know who we...
And then we open at 2:00 in the afternoon till 5:00 for the general public. And then on Sunday, from 10:00 to noon, is for the handicap, people to come in. And then we open again in the afternoon from 2:00 to 5:00. And so...
We're going to have a grand opening ceremony again this year?
Yes, we will, and you're supposed to be there at quarter to 6:00.
Quarter to 6:00.
Everybody.
Everybody.
I'm looking forward to that.
And we hope that everybody, all we have to hope for now is the weather.
The mayor has all kinds of perks, I don't want to miss that. You know, I get a private meeting with Santa and Mrs. Claus and...
And Santa's lap.
Certainly, a souvenir key to the, to the Christmas village and everything.
And I was just looking at your picture from last year, yesterday, matter of fact, on Santa's lap.
Yeah.
It was very impressive.
So the opening ceremony was on Thursday?
I tried to say, Mrs. Santa's lap.
Yeah, just come to the front door and be let in there, and then of course, the general public is already downstairs, going through the maze down there and playing games and winning all kinds of prizes, and it's quite a, quite a show and a lot of fun.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Sharon Cavanagh and her crew for downstairs, what they do down there, it's just amazing. Sharon puts in, she's been there every day for two weeks now, working down there to get it set up, so we really appreciate what she does.
Hours and hours of time, it's pretty amazing.
Any other council comments? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Baer. Any discussion? Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we are adjourned at 17 minutes past.